City Council meeting, we start at seven o'clock. Calling in the meeting order. Roll call. Charity Witt, Jason Anderson, Maggie Peterson, Kim Stanley, Jackie Peterson, LaDona Reiner, Laura Anderson, Jack Mailey, Sammy Poots. And Katie Black. Caroline. Caroline over here, yes, yeah?
Yeah. Meeting was called for by Mayor Charlie Witt at seven oh one PM. President of the meeting was Sam and Carrie Witt and Maggie Peterson. Also attending was Caroline Kersey, James Kersey, Pearson. And guests were Katie Black, Jack Mailey, and Sarah Tinsley and Kathy Sazza. Charlie brought to the council a tensioned paper that Caroline had written about addressing chair from Lincoln, Kansas City, everybody in Hamburg. A member wishing to have before should address the chair by saying mayor and wait till he is recognized before speaking further. Charlie read the minutes of the June four, two thousand eighteen meeting and the special meeting on June twenty fifth, two thousand eighteen on the wealth. She made a motion except for minutes as red, maybe second motion passed three to zero. Caroline read the bills as councilwoman over them, Jack Mailey had requested that they be read. Carrie made a motion to pay the bills, she made second motion, passed three to zero. Sarah and Katie were both there representing the community club. They wanted to make sure the club gave us two thousand dollars that we had asked for with playground code, who we take care of out of city. Sarah also wanted to know if the set there now was safe and we're buying new pieces to repair the set. Carrie said that we needed a special meeting to discuss the playground and bring up ideas council set up playground meeting July twenty third, two thousand eighteen. That momma said that we had equipment to pay our sewer drains and he said that we spend money that we don't have to if we would train our workers. He said that we had a really bad spot in road, railroad in May. James was to get it filled in. Carrie said we could only do one thing at a time. James said that he had gotten remixes to fix. A hole in front of the city after someone had fallen. He had said that she could ask Chris if we have a hole where we can use. James said he would get a pallet of remix, forty to sixty bags of walls, assist along maybe it would get reduced price. Carrie made a motion that we order the block pallet, I expected the motion three to zero passed. Kathy Sazza was complaining about the times on her reader reading, insisting that the readings didn't go together. Caroline told her to leave it. Leave them with her and she would look into it. James was showing the council the bad water. He was getting a third Chris explaining the water tower needs to be cleaned and then he could open some valves that are closed and might help clear the water. He made a motion to have a water tower cleaned, this cost two thousand dollars. Carrie seconded motion, passed three to zero. Charlie and Caroline were going to dinner for the PRFC of current money. We are to tell them about how we use the money. James said the new law more cut the cutting time in half and we need to find some way to use the floor office left of the well, throwing their own bottles of remark. James said that he needed to rebuild that code. Maggie asked about inventory of all the equipment that the city has plus those sewer numbers. Caroline was to check with Pickens on maintenance agreement on the sewer. Need to have deep creek clean out the sewers. James planned on continuing to process the ton on electrical motors and wastewater. Kim asked about the weeds in the ditch on Main Street. James said that he had sprayed that but it ran out. Carrie and James discussed the notice over on how to fix it. James talked about the leaky mound of ditties. He said he'd fix it if he asks about not having to pay for the water from a break. The council said no. Next council meeting, the August sixth, two thousand eighteen, was the special meeting on July twenty third, two thousand nineteen. Carrie made a motion during the meeting, Kim seconded motion, passed three to zero. We're meeting during the day. Any additions or corrections?
Um, yeah. That was, um, where it says a pallet of remix, it wasn't James's sister-in-law, it was my mom's. It was mom's, Charlie's sister-in-law. So we could use James as he would get a pallet of remix as his sister-in-law. And then you had a question?
Yeah, because it says Maggie asked about inventory. I don't remember.
I did. But that's when Maggie was calling me, Maggie two, remember?
Oh.
Maggie two. Maggie one and Maggie two.
You didn't do the asking about inventory?
Kim did.
Oh, Kim did. Okay. Mom called her Maggie. It was Maggie two. Mine was hard to understand at all and the cities, when they take, wasn't really very easy because it's hard to figure it out. And anything else? I don't know, so what are your case corrected? But.
Any other corrections, additions?
Is Sarah's last name right on here?
Sarah Timsen. Yeah. You bet, Tinsley. No. I can't. I used the whole name. T-I-M-S-O-N.
T-I-M?
S-O-N.
Special council meeting on the playground equipment, July twenty third, two thousand nineteen. The meeting was called for by Mayor Charles Witt, seven oh one PM. All present was Kim Stanley, Carrie Witt, Maggie Peterson, Katie Black, Jason Anderson, Anderson was as, also president was James Peterson, Caroline Kersey. Guest was Martin, girl was Stanley. The Stanley kids, Sarah Tinsley, still the name. Sarah presented a check for two thousand dollars from the community club for our playground equipment. Maggie and Carrie both brought pictures of playground equipment that they had found that were on sale. The council had a discussion on each one. Caroline also gave us some ideas on some equipment. Carrie asked how much money we had to spend. Caroline told them there was a grant of five thousand eight hundred dollars, two thousand dollars from the pop fund, plus two thousand dollars, what, two thousand dollars from the club, two thousand dollars for the pop project fund. Carrie said that she felt the city could afford to put some money into the fund. They discussed, they had a discussion on the playground equipment that is already in the park, vast, no holes in that condition. James went down to the park to see if we would have room for the new equipment and felt that we did, that we would need to get more ground cover. Carrie made a motion to purchase the cruising and atmosphere system at the cost of twelve thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars from NBE Playground Incorporated. Kim seconded motion, passed four to zero. Kim said she could ask Chris if he would donate for us the park fund. Kim said that you could ask the military about helping with the ground cover, telling them that we are a small town. It was suggested that we ask the business in the area if they would be willing to help. Sarah asked about monitoring the equipment to make sure that it's safe and that no damage has been done, but we need money to paint the equipment that is already in the park. Carrie made a motion to adjourn the meeting, Kim seconded motion, passed four to zero. Meeting adjourned at seven oh one PM.
Any corrections, additions to the special meeting?
Yeah, we were, weren't we gonna ask?
Did you ask Crop Service?
Yeah, ask Crop Service and Chris down there about just about donating money to help with paint and, you know, fixing up the park. That was also part of the deal.
Sarah's, yeah, because we were gonna ask her to shoot, but they don't have a meat sheet, which she wants. I'll let you know. Any other additions or corrections? Bills in two thousand eighteen. West Star Energy Street lights, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. West Star Energy for the office, relevant park and sewer, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Gas service for the office and the sewer plant, seventy-two fifty-eight. I will tell you that we did find some space with what we're being charged for. We found that there was heater or something, number three one. We couldn't figure out why we were getting a gas stove from them that was on. So keep it down and turn that off. And then the number one well, right floor, ready up, there was a gas heater in there and the pipe pipe that come out pulled a little bit of gas. So those two that might, you know, come down a little bit and special for gas and then then Crop Service next, that would come down to the door on those front, on those bills. For the Valley telephone, eighty-six thirteen. Sands Club membership for the year, a hundred dollars. Charles Matthew, Charles's certificate, a hundred and fifty dollars. James Peterson, mileage and lunch at class, two fifty-eight oh two. CNS Service Incorporated Battery Service, all fuel, a hundred ninety-six sixty-five. Lincoln County Refuge, one thousand forty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Division of Environment, wastewater permit, a hundred eighty-five dollars. Smith and Love was come from the station and vacuum, eight hundred eight dollars and five sixty cents. Beverly Insurance Agency Director of Official Liability, one hundred dollars. Environmental Lab, water testing, two hundred twenty-two dollars. Now that's for a couple of months. KEDOR, Miss Link's tax, auto protection, cleaning, sixty-nine forty-six. State Farm Truck Insurance, three hundred sixty-nine sixty-seven. Payroll for myself, eight hundred forty-five dollars and nine cents. James Peterson, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-one cents. Jennifer O'Hara, lawyer fees, six hundred dollars. And James payroll, nine eighty-three fifty-three. James had asked us, please payroll. So that was something he had asked if we could do it on a permanent basis.
What do you get paid usually?
We get paid once a month and he won't, we get paid every two weeks.
Okay.
Total expenses, eight thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents. Spent on the debit card, lot implement, seal, kit and labor, six point forty-two. Dollar General, pop, ten eighty-five. US Post Office water testing, sixteen forty. Walmart flags, a hundred twenty-three thirteen. Sam's, come here fifty-four thirty-five. Dollar General posters and stuff, that's my head, signs up with the power cleaning, two hundred and seventy-two sixty-six. Our total income was eleven thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-one cents. West Star did is five hundred fifty-three thirteen. State of Kansas, we got about a thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. Kansas gas, seventy-two thirty-five. Pop project, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents. Our bank balance is twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Our debt balance is a hundred and seventeen thirty-four. Our CDs are one hundred fifteen thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars and eight cents. Our hope is a hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Corrections, additions, minutes, bills, pay.
What was that under income, the Kansas Guard, what's that?
The what?
Kansas Guard, at the bottom, seventy-two thirty-five, what was that?
Gas, Kansas gas.
Yeah, that's just gas.
Oh.
Sorry. Those are some good deals, I guess, every month. West Star and State Kansas. State Kansas, like our, our, like, ones and things like that. The other above ones are, uh, just for water.
That lawyers do. B for Jennifer was offered the Crop Industries.
Yeah. Wells is, uh, Wells.
Um, I approve. I approve. I make a motion, we accept the minutes and the bills as read.
I second.
Carrie made a motion, approve the minutes and bills, she seconded motion. Approved, all approved, raise your hand. Who was that, was it your own?
Probably want to do a little contact.
Yeah, okay.
I'll let you do it.
Do you just have the one copy? So people can read it?
Yeah, we only have one copy. I can make some more, but we only have the one copy that has to be signed and stamped.
We should probably go to executive session, just have somebody read it. We should probably go to executive session and have somebody read it.
No, we don't have any.
If we want to discuss it, we do. If we want to discuss it.
Yeah, he said it's not for you.
As long as there is no discussion. But no, they haven't read it, I haven't read it, or whatever.
Hasn't read it? Jason, have you read it?
No.
Nobody asked. I move to go to executive session for, um, ten minutes, seven thirty.
Make motion to accept that, sign it?
I second. Carrie, Jason made a motion, sign it, sign this.
Do you like it?
Huh?
Made a motion to sign, to sign the quit claim, we didn't, to Crop Service and what did they call it? Co-plead, for her mom and Caroline to sign it, get it back to Katie and then we.
Second, Carrie second.
Carrie seconded?
Yep. All approved, raise your hand.
Shut off.
Put it on cool or something.
Is it hot?
Yes.
It's very cold.
Don't it have to be so loud?
Hmm?
Don't it have to be so loud?
It's not loud.
Everybody else is hot. If you want to hear, move over here.
It's okay.
You can come over here, Jack, if you can't hear. Oh, all right. A lot of bodies in here, get them out here, doctor, you're doing real fast.
Yeah, I can just sign it.
Well, I, I can do it.
Yeah, because this is just, um, I'm getting like.
Kind of knock the wall down, extend into there.
Two chairs are here, they're not all working out. Okay. Laura, your school bus, your school bus out?
Okay, I, I would just like to basically ask permission or whatever if I could possibly pull in the driveway to the water tower and the backing to our property. During the day, I would be out on the street, so. But at nighttime, you know, I park my bus at night, I just want to have, know if I have permission to use your guys' drive to back into our property.
That's no problem. See no problem with that. That is park, parking out on the street, where do you mean parking out?
On the east side of my house.
Oh, okay. I guess it's all right, I think it's all right.
Yeah, it's just wider than the one we got, should never be able to swing in to the one on the south end.
Hello?
Hello?
I just wanted to find out if I can do that, so.
Just talk to Snow and you have to make yourself out. But you'll have to have your bus go in winter time.
Yeah. At that time, I might be on the east side of my house, I don't know during the winter time, but either or, you know.
I just, you know, the parking out in the street, that's the only thing, you know, with that type of complaints, a truck sitting there, it's always been, it's always been that, and it's going to be that, trucks sitting there on the side. It's going to be sitting there all day. What time do you get off your bus around?
Well, you know, I'm gone two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. And then in the afternoon, when I come home, it would probably be parked out back. But come winter time, it might be a different story because the bus has to be pulled in. So. And there again, you know, come winter time, how much should I want to tear up my own yard and the drive back there, going in and out?
It's all right. No, I don't have a problem with that. If that's the question, people wouldn't ask me. I have no problem with it.
I just wanted to be sure and ask, so.
Can you just start? Can you just start that?
And when you start?
Um, I, the sixteenth is the first day of school, so. Got to go over and expect the buses on Saturday and Friday.
You have the CBL, you know that?
Yes. Got air brakes too. All right, thank you.
Katie Black is one deal. That you got to do down on the water bill?
Uh, yeah.
That's what you got, Katie Black, water bill.
Yeah. That I would ask the county council if you would go into executive session, because I'm talking about medical stuff.
About what?
Medical stuff. And it's for somebody that's not here.
Okay. How long?
Fifteen minutes. I probably won't even make that long.
Want to, want to be the first one?
Yeah.
We'll leave you last. I don't care that. Okay, Jack?
Why don't you go ahead, some of these people, I'll catch it later.
Okay. LaDonna?
I apologize for not being here last month. I just wanted to give you the report on the community meeting. I just wrote down exactly what people wrote down and kind of summarized it. Not quite sure where we go from there, but.
Can you mention those?
Oh, yes, I do. And kind of the top three priorities, I'm not going to read over the whole list, was getting the falling down structures that pose a safety and health issue taken care of, particularly on Main Street. The walkability due to poor sidewalks and dangerous buildings on Main Street and around the park area, and then the poor conditions of the street in town. And so, I guess you've already talked to Jennifer, she's working on the ordinances and that's getting going. Just takes time. So I just kind of wanted to make sure you had that report and I'd like to have another community meeting coming up. School's starting, I mean, I think we need to wait till further in September and I might just go like to the church after church or to both of the churches, pick a couple Sundays, see what other community members think. I also shared with, I don't know if you've got them in the mail yet, a Leadership Lincoln County information. I mailed those to the city council people, to the pastor who came to the meeting, to Katie, a couple other people who I thought sounded interesting at that meeting. The Health Equity Grant would pay for a couple, two, three, even four maybe, to attend Leadership Lincoln County. I know it is a series of months, one Thursday a month, I think it's a third Thursday a month. If you're not familiar with the program, they go around to different places in the county. They go to Topeka just to learn a little bit about leadership and what's going on in your own community. And then they do a project. And sometimes they do a big project, sometimes they split into a little project. And I talked to Kelly and she was okay with the people that went from there to actually pick a project in Beverly to work on and then we could work on maybe writing periods, whatever the project ends up being. So I do, did request to the Lincoln School District to see if there was a junior or senior that wanted to be part of Leadership Lincoln County also that we could pick, so we'd have kind of the youth side of things. So if anybody's interested, just let me know. Don't be too worried about the application. It's kind of worrying, it seems daunting, but it's not really. And I think they're going to take everybody because they got enough money for tuition so that you could, if you really are interested in doing it, to make them the time commitment that you can get into the class.
There's several kids that go to Tuskegee, there's several who are, they possibly.
Yes, if I can't fit any, that was my next, is to ask kids here that went to school in Tuskegee, so we'd have at least two kids maybe. So, but I have not gotten to Tuskegee schools yet. But do you go to school in Tuskegee?
Lincoln.
Lincoln? Are you a junior or senior? Do you have time? Are you into a lot of sports? I'll let you read the application and see what you think and that's fine. I'm fine with as many as we can get who are interested in Beverly, so I think it would be a good experience for everybody. And that's really about all I have today, unless somebody has questions for me. I am working on some health related, uh, there's, it's hard to get health related data any smaller than like north, central, regional. It's hard to get triggered down data, but the pharmacy is able to go with a zip code and tell me the top ten medications that are prescribed and no other information, just what those are for six, seven, four, two, three year code. And the hospital was able to get all this zip code admissions to any hospital in the state for last year. So no names or anything, just numbers and what their diagnosis was. So kind of trigger down what the health, kind of what the health looks like in Beverly, but the numbers are so small, it's kind of hard to just say, this is it, you know? But it is a, is a, is a starting point on the health side of it, so. Any questions for me or anything? You need some more support? We're not going to hurt him. I'll see you on our, not anymore.
Thank you.
Well, David sent you early, we'll start with you.
I'll slide over here and kind of.
I already gave him out, too.
I appreciate you guys seeing here this evening. I'd given Caroline information the other day and she had a packet of paperwork out. I'm going to read from the paperwork, so you don't have to, or you can look at the free pictures, whatever works for you guys, okay? Thank you for. "Thank you for allowing me to come this evening and speak to you. Back on May first, the second, and third, there were significant storms that came through Lincoln County. On the first, there was rotation spotted by a train spotter in the area of the practice football field, and the sirens were activated in the city of Lincoln. Law enforcement was directed by the sheriff to drive up and down the streets of the community to make citizens aware of the weather and to also make them, and to also have them take cover. Through this process, I was upstairs in my office in the courthouse and lost internet access at the courthouse because of a lightning strike that was in the near vicinity. That same evening, there was rotation spotted by a train spotter in the Beverly and Barnard area. This was the same night that the AF3 tornado went through Ottawa County. The tornado was on the ground for twenty-nine minutes and roughly fourteen miles. The base of the tornado was a half to three-quarters mile wide. Power was knocked out in Beverly and Barnard communities, and volunteer firefighters were asked to go to their respective stations, get in trucks, and drive around the communities and make announcements pertaining to the weather and direct the public to go inside and seek shelter because of the severe weather. Corrective actions were determined after the event that Lincoln County needed to have one central source for tornado siren information, maintenance, and record-keeping. The repeater board of Lincoln County has agreed to be the primary agency in charge of maintenance and checks pertaining to the siren system in Lincoln County as they are already in charge of the maintenance issues and buy annual checks of the repeater system. They have a technician from the Minneapolis area that is contacting me if there are any issues that need to be corrected or fixed. The seven members of the repeater board are Richard Vansel, he's the chairperson right now, and he's up in Hunter speaking this evening at their city hall meeting also, Mark Levin, John Alquist, Randy Rathman, Brett Kingen, Jay Corr, Jeremiah Zacco, and Troy Anderson. Each fire district, emergency management, EMS, and the city of Lincoln all pay three hundred dollars. Both school districts pay a hundred dollars, and the health department pays two hundred dollars for yearly dues to the repeater board. These funds are collected and utilized to help pay the cost of the technician for checking the system, making any corrections or updates or upgrades. The repeater board would ask each community to pay three hundred dollars additionally, annually into this account. When the fire sirens are activated, it's the fire departments that are, that is utilizing this asset. When severe weather is imminent and life safety is at risk, it is the community's responsibility to activate the siren to make people aware. Back on June eleventh of two thousand eighteen, I approached the Lincoln County commissioners and asked them if I could approach each city in the county and ask that the city councils, if they would allow Lincoln County to take ownership of the sirens and maintain insurance coverage on the sirens. K-CAM, the insurance carrier for the county, had advised that if Lincoln County was able to show ownership of the sirens, that they would not have any issues with having them covered under the policy of the county. The repeater board and I are looking at writing grants to facilitate updating sirens in Lincoln County. We've contacted Storm Sirens, Inc., a company out of Norman, Oklahoma, and have received some quotes on sentry sirens. I've attached paperwork specifically with information about sirens for the city of Beverly, pages three through five of this packet of paperwork. The intent is to replace the sirens in the communities in Lincoln County along with the siren in Hunter, as it is part of the Lincoln County Fire District, and then also add a siren to the Vespur Community Building for the Vespur community. The cost includes the sirens and the decoder to be able to interact with paging system located in the law enforcement center. There are decoders within the county currently that were put in back in, in the nineties. The information that I'm presenting you is without battery backup, as generally the battery backup system is usually only good for about five years, and then you are responsible for updating that on a five-year basis. The repeater board has looked into the cost of the battery backup for each system, and it was determined that five years you were replacing the battery. So, we're looking at a grant to assist in purchasing a twenty kilowatt generator that would be tied to the fire department. When power goes out in the community, the generator would automatically engage and run through the duration when power is restored to the community. I approached Precision Electric and was quoted a cost of eight thousand dollars per community, and the cost would be for the generator installation and the generator, excuse me, installation of the generator and the wiring to complete the project. The cost to install a new siren in the city of Beverly would be fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars without battery backup. Complete and installed, turnkey-ready through this company. The company was, as stated, that they would place one siren located on First Street, approximately a half block west of Main Street. This is a sentry model ten V siren pictured below. The overall cost of the project for the eleven sirens for the location, for these locations, is a hundred and forty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. I've previously spoken to the Lincoln County Commission about matching funds for this project, and they advised me that if repeater board would take ownership of the sirens, that the county could insure them through their insurance carrier. They would, they would match funds, yet to be determined in the amount. I spoke to the Assyria City Clerk, and she advised me that the Dane Chee Hansen Foundation gave them ten thousand dollars to update slash upgrade the tornado siren in their community. This happened within the past three years. Um, again, I approached the city of Lincoln about this already. I spoke to them, their last city council meeting, like, they meet the third Monday of the month, and they have already said yes. I have their blessing to proceed with writing grants. Um, again, if the city of Beverly is not interested in this, I will just not pursue a new tornado siren for the city of Beverly.
Are they...
Go ahead.
Are they wanting us to come up with the fourteen nine?
No, no, that, that's, that's, that's most of what the grant is gonna cover. And then again, I asked the commissioners, and again, there's some other grants that I'm looking at writing also to help offset those costs.
We may have to come up with something just...
Well, again, all I'm currently asking for is three hundred dollars annually. That, that's gonna be your cost, and rather than, rather than having to pony up money to match, but that three hundred dollars annually per year would also help include the siren and the checks and, and all the updates that are done. Um, and I think there's two and a half, three years warranty timeframe on those sirens. Um, I've also recently, in addition to this, Storm Sirens, Inc., I've been in touch with a company out of Missouri, just on the other side of Kansas City, Blue Valley Public Safety. And their technician and I drove around two Thursdays ago and went through all the communities in the county, went up to Hunter, went to Barnard, everywhere, went to Vespur, as there is currently no siren in Vespur. But he was talking that what we could do with one of Sylvan's sirens was take it, refurbish it, and then put it at Vespur. So, again, with, the location of the siren sits down beside the fire station right now. I don't know if that would have to be moved, not sure. But, uh, again, Wes Scar is the, the electric provider for this part of the county. Um, I previously spoke to someone from their agency, and they said, "If you purchase a fifty-foot pole from this company in Salina that they use, they will come out and put it in for free." And again, that fifty-foot pole, whatever the monetary value might be, um, would also be in addition to offset the grant. That, that's a, a cost that is associated with your, your part of your match. So, uh, uh, again, um...
When would you need our answer?
I, I, I don't need it tonight unless you folks are comfortable enough tonight giving me an answer. Um, and again, Lincoln, I, I presented that to them, their last meeting, and they gave me an answer that night.
It's just three hundred dollars a year, and you're gonna service it, take care of it, make sure...
Upgrades, updates, tests.
We don't have to worry about any of it.
No matter.
Anything if you're wrong.
No.
Other than, like, last time, the tornadoes aren't not going off.
But Dave, but if you're looking, you're looking into getting generators, maybe?
Possibly, or, or again, too, there's, there's also a battery backup option. But again, um, I think on page four shows, page four, the city of Beverly, shows a cost with a battery backup. And that's, I have to put my readers back on. With the, with the battery backup, that's sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and what difference for a battery. So, again, even still, with all the communities ponying up three hundred dollars, we're still not gonna be, and we'll have some fees built up by the time the warranty ends on the product, whatever gets installed. So, uh, again, we're not, we're not robbing money out of the repeater board money, and they're not a wealthy institution either.
Right.
Um, that, that, that would offset that cost. And, and again, this Justin, this technician that lives over in Minneapolis, um, again, we have a problem with the radios. We contacted him, he's generally out that afternoon to fix him the problem.
Now, why does the siren have to be moved?
It, I'm not sure if it has to or not. I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It may. I, I, I don't know yet.
Okay, well, I seen this, it's on First and Main, and that's the back, the back of the hole.
Well, and again, that's more towards the center of, of town to where the radius would, would all be able to hear it.
Yeah.
It is why they're looking at relocating it. They have a, a digital map with the decimal amounts that the siren activates to. And, and if it was located at that location, that would, that would ensure that the siren would be heard, excuse me, by the whole community.
And we can't use the head that's up there already?
The gentleman that came through with me last time said, "No, we couldn't." Um, I found some paperwork at the office that showed that the Beverly siren was purchased in eighty-two or eighty-three.
Oh.
And, and like, for example, the one up in Hunter was put in in seventy-five. So, we're not, worse often, Barnard's, Barnard's is similar to this. Lincoln's was two thousand nine for both of theirs. Sylvan has a two thousand nine-ish, and then older models also.
Yeah, like I said, the fire clerk, go ahead.
Well, I just had a question on the money. Um, you said that the battery backups might be a long-term risk for next year?
No, that's, that's the life expectancy of that battery backup system. Um, our technician was told us, he gave us that information, and he deals on that stuff on a daily basis.
So, how much then would the generator?
Uh, again, I had that quote in there, Precision Electric, I spoke to them for a twenty kilowatt generator and to have it wired, um, to where, to where if electricity got, got compromised here, they would wire it to where the generator would automatically kick on. They're saying that, that twenty KW generator would be, to install it and do all that work, is eight thousand dollars.
Right, but how long is that gonna last?
Generator, propane, it'll last forever.
It's taken care of.
Yeah, and, and it, it's really low maintenance, and, and we're looking at propane as opposed to gasoline, because who knows how often power will be compromised here and, and gas sitting in a tank is...
Right.
For a duration amount of time is, is not good.
So, when are you gonna know whether you're gonna do the battery or the generator? Depends on how many grants?
Well, and, and that's kind of city council's alternative too.
I'd like to run the generator, but I think it's worse.
And, and again, it'd be, it'd be more cost-efficient to run a generator. And then in addition to that, if, if we had to, you could, in, in the winter time, and I'm not, I'm not saying this, but you could ultimately, I know there's heat down at the fire station. If, if power was compromised in the city, you could at least have the hordes of people here go down to the fire station as a place of warmth. Yes, yes.
No, I remember, I remember when the, uh, fire alarm used to sit back here. You know? Yeah, the three-legged, the legs are still over there for it. I can't remember who sold the siren to some other town. My question is, do we own that or is the fire department on that?
Yes.
Paperwork that I saw showed the city of Beverly.
Okay.
That's, that's a receipt that I saw.
Okay, there you go.
That's a receipt that I saw back from Little Vinada when it was purchased back then.
Okay.
So, you basically need approval for us for the three...
Well, again, if, if you're comfortable making that decision, and I'm not trying to shove it down your throat or anything.
I mean, we need something, we can't, you know? It's, we got a lot of people on our, people on our hands, you know?
Right.
People's lives.
Right.
Yeah. They run a lot of fire trucks going through town, college.
Yeah.
And compromise, compromise life safety, you have the first responders too.
Sure. Did I make a motion? We go ahead and go with David's proposal?
I attack the net. Very good idea.
And, and again, prior to, prior to me writing the grant, the motion was made and it was seconded. Again, if the grant is approved, that's the only way that, that I will allow the county or, or the city to, to start making those annual payments. And it won't be before this year is up. I mean, I plan to write the grants, get busting my tail on that, but, uh, again, it will probably be starting two thousand nineteen. At some point. And I'm not saying November of two thousand nineteen, because what's the use of that? But, but, again, is, is that fair with all of you?
Yeah. That's good.
Again, motion, I didn't mean interrupt, motion was made and seconded.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. If you have any questions, I think Caroline has my card. Or again, I can run out, I can run out my vehicle, leave one for each of you if you would like. Thanks.
Thanks for doing all that.
Uh, again, it's just a spark, but try to get it running that way. So, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. Bye.
My name's David Doe.
Congratulations. Okay, Caroline, what was that, Minneapolis Police Department?
Um, we got a matter from stating that they have, uh... Finished their dog pound and everything, and it's open and stuff, but they want, they're increasing their price. Agreement is made first of January two thousand nineteen between the city of Minneapolis hereafter, the purchase of Minneapolis and the city of Beverly hereafter, for Beverly. They are increasing their annual pay to seventy-five dollars. We pay fifty now. You pay at any time, being twenty-five dollars per dog plus two dollars per day, per dog for food and water. And if the dog isn't picked up, we actually have to put it to sleep for twenty-five dollars. We are in agreement on it. We just need to sign it and... I mean, we have the money.
Yeah, well, I mean...
We can, we'll have courts, if you know who the dog is too, that, you know...
That'll help.
And that's the other thing too, is we really need to figure out some way to get pay on all the dogs that are in this town. Because we've had, Berlin has probably a couple of them that were in our house until the night they tried to jump in, said, "Right, you're bad." They got one of them and stuff, and, and you have to say, "Dog's in your house."
Does the bed still come here this county shots?
We can make an appointment for them.
Because then people might bring their animals and they can register them.
The last time we did that, we had three people.
Yeah.
I know we did.
So, but, you know, how's another one that we could, we could, we could do?
I know how to go there, we've done your bill and say, "I have a big tag, but..."
County or somewhere close with a tag to do, I need a warrant tag, so... I wish we could get tags, but we didn't have a date on.
Can't we go in and select horsemen and see if maybe it's an eight buck tag?
Why do you want a tag with no date on it?
Well, they've got, she's got a bunch of old tags.
Oh, I got...
Our, our tags, the only way you could order them is a hundred and fifty of them.
How hell is that not...
And we never use that, we never even get new ones.
Well, I told her, said, "As long as, if it says two thousand fifteen on the tag when issued in eighteen, if the number on the tag matches her paperwork, it doesn't matter if it says eighteen ninety-five."
Forget one of them, not an extra length.
And we can, we can use, you go start with two hundred tag.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we got about four in my box.
Yeah, every year they got a new box, and so, no use for any of them.
I would, as long as they try on the paperwork.
How much does it cost? They're paying the tax, you know? Four, three dollars.
You show, you show, you show proof of, uh...
There's two if they're fixed.
Radar, radar, radar.
And it's two if they're fixed, isn't it? There's a, there's a different price if they're fixed or not.
It used to be, but now they just put them down to three dollars a piece on them.
Yeah.
My curiosity, why don't we have our own dog pound?
We need to give an entry, kind of where?
Who picks the dog up?
James.
How do you transport it?
It's a truck. I haven't, I don't...
Do we have any quick...
No, no, how do you do it? He just puts it...
There's a tranquilizer gun back there, but...
I know most of the dogs are docile enough, there's probably a couple, you'd either need a pull or you have to knock them out.
Yeah, well, on this issue, we got a big life trap, the city has a big life trap that could double as a transport. But I think there was, there was one dog, um, Kathy Salazar brought over here. But, I think there was, there was one dog, um, Kathy Salazar brought over here, she found that leash, or came over.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it in dogs.
It was caught up on her property, she brought it over to us, and we found whose it was.
And then it happened to be found, and, and that'd be the first course, my first course of action is to find out whose it is.
Yeah, and sometimes that's, I mean, that's okay, unless, you know, but something is our habitual violation.
Right.
Then you wouldn't.
You gotta use a little, little bit of common sense, and. Right, there's no sense grabbing a dog just because it's in somebody's yard.
Well, and after three days, they may not claim that they put it to sleep.
Right, well, it's, it's, that's where you, now you gotta use some judgment.
I just keep them at my house, and have people, they have a.
Accidents happen, but, you know, something that's like every, every day, you know, people are getting a lot of complaints, and I guess that's more happy with the past.
Oh, do I remember.
Is there any special time of the year that you?
I put them all down, but one.
That you would go with them?
Yeah, it was, it was later in the year.
Probably the fall, I just, because in the weekends and in summer, they're all coming up to the lake or whatever, nobody's around.
Until we have some way to enforce anything, nobody's gonna care about bringing their dog, you know, just.
So, just wait until we find some rest before that's my time.
But, I mean, that's just the simple truth of it. Cats, nobody cares, dogs, nobody cares, and if we have no way to enforce it, we're spending money and time for nothing.
She compcharges, what, sixty dollars over here that day, and so much for the shot.
Now, does the city insurance cover you if you were bitten by a dog by trying to obtain it?
I don't know.
I didn't know if that was under.
I, I assume.
I would presume so, it would be an injury.
Anything that's listed in the job description or duties page, anything that have, would have something to do with that, I would.
And it's listed in there?
I think so.
Okay, yeah, it's listed.
I'm sure.
And transporting them to Minneapolis and through a bridge channel.
We'd say, you got bit, we'd say, go get paid, you know, pay the bill. One day off. One damn day. All right, Jack?
Yeah. Had the opportunity to do that. Name the test of the sand pipe clean, he told me what we found, it looked excessive in residue, is that right, James?
Yeah, it wasn't as bad as it was in the past, it was a lot better.
Did what you expected.
Than what I expected.
The only thing, he also reminded me that after it drained down, it took days and days to get the water level back up. You people don't realize how near you are to having no water. You're very close. Case of trouble, case of fire, forget it, because you have no fire protection. We're gonna take ten minutes, we took a pump, a gun, a hydrant, we're done. And also, in the few years, uh, so, I asked over whether it's insurance companies come around to check your fire department, your water system, your pressure, your hydrants, your storage, and then they, regarding that, they set your fire insurance rate to the city. And when they see what we got here now, our rates will go sky high, because we have basically very low fire protection.
Because of the water towers?
Yes.
That's what they count, they don't count on. They don't give you less credit for trucks, because their trucks aren't here twenty-four seven. They give you little credit, not much.
Right.
But you hook, two pumpers, two hydrants, and you'd be done in about fifteen minutes. In case of any other type of failure, if you don't realize, I don't know. There's a big mistake made when whoever drilled these wells convinces that three wells put thirty-five gallon men, or everybody flares, or still not a drink at the same time, could be out of water. So, you gotta keep that in mind. But, when it was explained that engineer and well driller was paid, they should have, they should have been paid for that kind of.
So, basically, we don't have enough water?
We ran one well, just wait it dry one time.
Right, since we, since we got the new one. Okay, so what's the remedy to this?
Real hard.
We just finished, finished the project, because you'll be paying on till twenty forty.
What would that be?
Months, thousands, thousands, I reckon, months, paying for all that stuff. But when they're not twenty forty, I'll be a hundred and eight years old, I don't go through that. James, I had a visit, and he talked about the residue, and there's no residue, no pipes, and he'd been working at it.
In the water tank?
In the water lines.
My best, yes, and anybody that have discovered water in the house, put in, put in a whole house filter, that's on the way to the water out.
Sure.
You can't fight it, because you're gonna end up with a divorce machine or someplace else all the time.
And, and the new stuff that we're using, pour the water on, should help come down?
It's, it.
Eventually?
It, eventually.
It's not gonna happen overnight, or missing. We've had so much stuff went on, you know, you go about ten years of low maintenance.
Sure.
You're not gonna catch up overnight. You've got ten maintenance people out there, making every day, and, you know, and everybody says that things going so nice, well, I'll assure you one thing, the city council mayor job isn't a social, a social function, it's very hard work job, and it's not a social club or anything. And, and I know in fact, a lot of us donated hundreds of hours, managed like very good things, and I guess we shouldn't see council under a new shovel, because plenty to be done out there.
Yeah.
James.
Well, I, I feel for James, he can do it all, he, he had a tremendous deal dumped on him. And it went on too long, it was unsupervised, everybody.
Yeah, for years.
Questioned who, who is in charge, I'll ask that question, who is in charge?
The council and the mayor.
Well, you can't let it all on the radio.
No, I said the council and the mayor, everybody's in charge, yeah.
You're all in charge, and it's, it's, don't be done, that's where it falls.
That's right.
I have one, one more little issue that, I walk a lot because I'm blind, and so, about two down, after rain, I usually find fresh mud on the sidewalks, because the ditch is like, and to get up here by the old hardware building, you've got a choice, you've got eight feet there to walk in, either fall in a ten foot hole on this side, or break a leg in a two foot hole over here. And there's no sentence, it should be, might be easy to take care of, and that pit down there, right down hardware store, there's, door down, either it should be fenced with a permanent fence around it, or it should be filled. I don't know what actually you'd be thinking, but just putting it off isn't the answer.
We're not putting it off, we've sent him plenty of letters, have you not?
I just sent him a little.
Yeah, and he's not responding, so now we need.
Actually, actually, our urgent state that he can be five hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, so we just need to, we need to pursue that and send him a letter, and certify a letter or something, make sure he gets it.
I, I don't expect him to ever come back to do anything, man.
Well, then, if he doesn't ever do it, then we either charge him so much a day, which he won't pay, or we just do it ourselves and charge him the bill.
We've got plenty of air in the, in the ditches that fill the hole.
Yeah, and we're working on that.
Okay, I, I just, I'm not trying to plant anything, but I said, I don't see this thing, but I know things, I can affect them.
You do.
And, I'll do everything I can, I think, get a little far out, get out, get my push crew out, sweep some sidewalks off, because I see when I walk up there, places with sidewalks, there's sand murs, it's all across the street.
They're bad.
I can harvest, I can harvest some of that, and I, I don't know, I told I got today.
And James, on the, uh, back of the sedimental line, is there any way, like on the south end of town? Because I know we flushed through the hydrants, and yeah, there's that burst of discoloration. Have like a fast flood exit, but straight out of the gr, you know, straight out like, uh, down by wellhouse number one. You just cut that off and just. Open up so to your sediment.
Your hydrant, it doesn't restrict, you can open that hydrant up to where it gets free flow, what you're talking about.
And it'll, it'll pick that sediment up?
Yeah.
Just sitting on bottom of the pipes?
Yes, you can get enough water, really fast enough, yes.
Okay.
Where Jack's talking about, our standpipe, we only have so much volume, and so much pressure, so when he's talking about looking up two bumper trucks to the hydrants, like if there's a fire, in fifteen minutes, they can suck that tower down. And we're out of water, because our wells cannot keep up.
Yeah.
So, we don't have enough water volume to correctly flush our hydrants and system accurately, or often enough in the right way to get all of that out. Um, I've talked to a couple different people from a couple different agencies. The company that cleaned the tower, they offer a service that's called Ice Pig. Um, it sounds funny, but a pig is something they put in the water line, and force it through with pressure or whatever to clean out our water. Now, they have this procedure now, they use sodium chloride and something to freeze, something, a, a real abrasive slurry, and then they'll, you isolate a section of pipe, and they'll pump it in one hydrant and blast out the other, and it's, it's basically like a giant slushy. And that is, that's so, like a solid object, a pig, the old pigs used to get cocked, there's no way for this ice to get cocked. If, if it does, it'll just melt, and then problem solved. Anyway, and they push that through, clean out your whole line. It's very expensive. It's like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to get it to show up with their trucks.
So, maybe someday a grant can be for something like that?
No, it's.
Is that anything we can do eventually?
Ourselves? No, I have, there's no, you don't have the equipment, or, that's, no.
I mean, it's something yours down the road, once we hit.
Well, we want to get some evidence, I was gonna talk about the water line.
Oh, when are we gonna get Katie?
Uh, she wanted to come, oh, wanna do that now?
I'm here, I'm.
You want me to? Yeah, I want to do Katie now. I make a motion and go to executive session to, to let Katie discuss what she needs to discuss.
This kicked off, by the way.
Hold it up, and turn around.
I know, I forgot something, I didn't mention it. One thing, if it weren't for the personal notes that I made and kept, when a sewer was built, you and me had a sewer map, because it was all messed up and all third way.
Oh.
So, you had a group come in, and they're gonna clean house, and our up-to-date water maps, open up the cases on. Uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of maps, I can't tell you all the water lines are, because that's a certain way, we've got a day's map here. We kept them up, and we figured all that little crisis away, we didn't need that. And things been going down. It was a way for a long time.
Wow.
I don't know. It's, it's a lot.
Well, thanks for all your knowledge, Jack.
Well, you can get it, it's one hundred percent accurate, but.
Well, it's better than what you got, nothing, sort of nothing.
James, you got a big project in that other room, there's, the sad part about it, when you had the problem with the sewer plant, it's tough to fix it, it was all that other.
Oh, down there? Yeah, there was parts, there was parts laying over there in the shed, brand new parts.
Yeah, parts around, and, and there were people there, and down at the hallies, like I had all the training on that one, it was new. And nobody bothered to ask me, so I didn't go over to that long either. You had Matt Harris, he'd be taking care of it, somewhat along the line. Not failed.
Yeah, but it runs like, runs like a kitten now, still.
When, uh, uh.
Oh, Lord. We had, we.
Hang yourself from the wall. Thank you, Mike.
Um, I make a motion that we accept Katie's, um, proposal.
I second it. Just if anything came to, just come and talk to Caroline. Okay, all the business playground equipment?
Um, it is, and it's ordered.
What color did you get? Did you get a color, did you tell them?
I got blue and silver.
All right, it's orange.
Moon colors. Moon colors.
I was going with orange, the orange and yellow, but it doesn't matter, it's all right. Yeah, so, too late, orange. I, because that's, we talked about it, and then I forgot to stop the next day, and talking to her about it, I didn't. She was, she didn't come down, so.
Is there a picture of the order?
It's all private, that code was twelve thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars, the discount's seven hundred fifty. Shipping, one thousand four hundred and ninety, overweight is two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five pounds, so it's twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
What was the name of that company?
PV. MB, MBV Playground.
MBV.
Oh, here we go. Yeah, it was the, it was discounted, it was like, yeah, half price, we got it, Sarah found it. And it's huge, but it has a big warranty. Like fifteen years, a hundred years, and it's still support.
So, is it steel frame? Or coated steel frame, or?
Yeah, it's big, heavy duty.
A race for thousand one hundred ninety-five pounds, and we have to unload it.
Yeah, they're very, what's his face, how's it?
Prop service and Chris Barry, they have skid loaders, forks, all of that.
Lots of for all ages.
Prop service from Chris Barry, both have skid loaders, with forks on them, and they get one of them to come up and load the horse. Yeah.
So, we thought it was a good deal.
Yeah.
And, but south rising is big.
What colors did you want? Gray colors.
Like orange and yellow or something, but.
You could pick and choose whatever, that would have just been fun to have.
Something bright to stand out, but it's, we're gonna put on this side of the park, so when people drive by, they'll see it, but we're, we're just gonna talk and get a sign, because Marcy Metz makes signs in Lincoln, and have it, um, this playground equipment brought to us by whatever, you know, the city apparently, the grant that it was, and then also the community club, so people know who funded it.
And whoever, whoever else would donate to that.
Sure, yes. So, did, so you did already, huh, you did already order it?
Yeah.
And it said, say, six to seven weeks to get here, one month, did they give you a deadline to be here?
No.
Can we see if they can change the color? Like, maybe the order is in the process?
I, I bet I doubt it, says color is confirmed.
It says what?
Order is confirmed.
Maybe I can call?
Oh, well.
You can try, I mean.
Yeah, just call them, ask them, if you can't, you can't, it's all right, nothing we can do about it, we're not.
It is full, the city blue.
Yeah, and I, it's probably like the picture I just showed, the blue, the blue and the silver, it's all, but just thought brighter would be more cheerful in the park.
Any dangers or structures?
I'm just was gonna show them to them, when I ordered those other books for, uh, yeah, or, I found that book there, and it's, or this is the stuff to, it's named Structures and Stuff that are in here. And it's ordinance is the stuff to, it's names and structures and stuff that are injured. And they have ordinance in there and stuff.
Do we have any ordinances of our own for damage or danger?
Yes, we do. But they're. They really need updated.
Well, we.
I know, I think the problem is we have to have somebody licensed to do it. Actually condemn a person.
Do we have to have somebody licensed for what?
To condemn them, I think.
No, you have to, you have to have, according to the ordinance that we have that I read, you have to have a compliance officer.
Yeah.
And, and then it goes from there.
And I think that basically tells itself almost the same thing.
Right, there's a, there's a list of criteria that, um, doesn't have to condemn it, but.
It just has to be unsafe.
Well, it's like a checklist, they can go through, oh, this is bad, this, 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 this. It leaves nothing up to interpretation or judgment, you know, it's, oh, bourbon present, a rough, broke, you know.
Yeah, cause.
What, all kinds of different stuff, yeah, there's, there's a whole list of stuff.
So compliance officer from one that we hired?
Yes, one of the council points. And you have, I can't.
Kind of like what we were going to do with the Godwin Downs, okay.
Right, I, I can't tell you exactly how the order is read, but.
If it's inhabited by human beings, cannot happen building for being in the.
All these.
Dangerous to the.
No, none of that, bros.
Have you bullies in my brother? I haven't found any, no compliance officer. There were some suspected structures.
Right, and we have, and aren't we still? Let's look that up.
But if there is a, a written complaint petition signed by four or five people, then the compliance officer is obligated to go and investigate or he can investigate, each chief can investigate on their own.
Now you just have to be brought up in front of the city council?
Well, that's, that's the beginning. And then, then it starts a, a hearing procedure with the owner of the property and it goes on down the line. And I can't remember exactly how it's ordered and all the, the, um, they either have to have a certain amount of, short amount of time to get it up to code or.
Yeah, exactly.
I have a problem with.
They have to pay for the dismantles and.
We, we have an ordinance, but we can't do anything until we have a, a city council meeting.
No.
So I think we need.
No, we have.
We have, we have a problem because we don't have.
A code enforcer.
We, we don't, we don't have any way to enforce anything.
And that's what, and, but that's what part of the, the ordinances and the, the court with Jennifer and Judge Grace, that's what part of all that is going to take care of. Things just take time.
Well, that's what I thought about when I saw that book. And I thought, if this could be set up and ordinance that was properly ordered and, and stuff. If ours.
Yeah, and we can, maybe you can get ours out for the next time and we'll go over that and see what, you know, what we can do with it. Because we're getting really close to being able to take care of some of these things. We just can't do it without.
Well, I've had, uh, two parents come to my home. And, uh, the lady's camper is part, easily away according to city ordinances. But, um, this elderly person has been giving the younger kids, uh, drugs.
Yeah, there is an ordinance on that.
I don't want to get the hot.
About limiting the camper, it has to be.
Right there.
Oh.
But the thing is there that it also says is they have to ask. So many people with a hundred and fifty feet of ammo, they can probably do.
I see everything is wrong, but.
Well, uh, it's not even a mobile phone.
No.
And we get, we have to make.
Right across, yeah.
Home base, move his, or put his trailer up. He had camper.
But, and they also made her hook his up to sewer.
Sewer.
Right, it's going to be there long term. That ordinance states if it's, uh, construction workers or artists, no, camper does not.
Right, that's not.
This ordinance doesn't cover that. This was brought to my attention a month ago, almost.
Yeah, it's been, well, she, she lived out July thirteenth.
Right, well, I went down and looked and yes, there's a camper down there and it's obvious. It's, I mean, stay in there.
Yep, lights are on, the door is open.
But that's where my jurisdiction really is, you know, what, who am I, what am I to tell? What she's doing or?
That's where we send them a, a copy of the, a copy of the ordinance, isn't it? I mean, I don't know how to go about it other than.
Well, it's been there about a month now, so.
Yeah.
And so we, we have a timeline, it ain't, oh, it's going to be here.
I just, I mean, everybody knew what.
It's on Danny, it's on.
Main Street.
It's on McLean's property, because they own that.
I've got grandkids down at my, you know, and I.
Toed off.
I won't, but that's.
She just can't, we can't have it toed off, she just can't live in there without it being hooked up.
Well, I know one time, and then I'll sit here and I asked her and she's, well, just a couple, three more days. We've got a place to rent, but nobody will rent to her because of what she does.
Mm-hmm, and then she, yeah, she's still living there. You go down there now and look at the lights on. She's still there.
What would she do?
She still scrubs.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I can't say anything, I don't, I can't say anything, this is recorded, not un-triable.
No, but, you know, that's what we hear. But she's still.
Yeah, maybe the town.
Well, even though she's still a cookie, she's in violation of some.
Yeah, violation of city ordinance.
So you want me to send her a copy of the ordinance?
I, I was just asking because I've got parents. What, last Saturday, I had another parent come to me and.
Right.
What, you see my kids over there, tell them, yeah, I'm not, I, I.
They need to call the police, that's what they need to do.
We're there, city council.
And.
Has to do with.
And the one mother is brought in a statement, but the city's not doing that.
Thanks.
You know.
We are, we are not, well, as far as her living in that, that's what we can take care of. But as far as anything else, we cannot, we're not the police, we have to.
Nothing we can do about it.
No, I tell you, sell them to the police.
I, I don't have the exact date that I went down and looked when.
It was like you said, the middle of July.
But, but she, she had to be out by July.
But it was still a few days before she finally got out.
Right. And she took her like three, two, three.
So, so basically by next month, she'll be in lockdown there.
Right.
Next week, I'm.
No, she already can buy it next week.
Next week, she'll be down or not.
Too long.
Send letter.
Or, you know, ask her whether.
Intentions are. Well, you know, she didn't bother to ask permission, they just moved the camper in and on the property and somebody's living there, you can't do that, or the city will just send her a copy of the city ordinance. And, you know, I don't think we have to ask her what her intentions are. You know, tell her she has so many days or whatever it says, you know, and she didn't bother coming out.
She has to have water, sewer, a hatch and a skirt.
And even, you know, the sheriff's department was, what did they come to do?
Nothing.
Nothing.
We don't have, um, we don't have a court thing, but we, we will. I don't know what, her got his hooked up, so we never.
Yeah. Might just take, you know, we just started meeting, tell her, you know, there's nothing, nothing to do. Yeah. They just, they can tell the cops that their kids are going down there all the time. But they still want. Well, I know, but they.
Yeah, just tell them, you have to call the police, there's nothing that the city council can do.
Not our place to call them. It's their kids. And it's just kind of, hey, I can call them, some of their friends and down there, she was five, I could do it. He was answering firefighters that was getting shot over there. And I told him, don't answer. But we heard the other ones and he went in and got his, so. Somebody was. It's just like that, I can't call. I can call you, but you know, I can't, I call cops too.
The explosions are happening down on first street and everything.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's been going on since.
Did you hear, I mean, did you hear how many, how many shots it took?
Shots before?
Yeah, I think that struck, you know, really did.
It's a math.
Yeah, he, he shot six times before he finally got it to make contact.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, yeah, that big movement in your ear. I can't tell you, that's very awesome.
Yeah, I'm happy to, you know, have a handful of that. Shot up, so. All right.
Traffic, standard tra- traffic ordinance?
Now I did have something on old news real quick. Uh, what are we going to do about that alley that's being blocked? The one off.
Billy's, I, he got a letter.
Okay, because I noticed that the West Star now has a contract company. Guy drives up and down those alleys and he points a gun at each one of our meters.
Yep.
There, he's got to get out to read up to three different meters and walk through and.
I sent, I sent a letter to Billy, I sent one to Tyne, and I sent one to Richard.
Do I get? For what?
And a dismissal.
Oh, when, the one with the thing in the alley, can't we just have that toed off? It's a lot, an alley is city property, we can just have.
That's what I thought was agreed a couple meetings ago.
Well, I say. Call Jared, have him go get it.
And I did have Chris move the truck park down there, it's setting over, cops don't just block. So that has been moved. And I found some people, we're going to get, take a side, we have Sunday, and we're going to go down and we're going to hit the roof on Jimmy Crowley's house. Well, that tarp fell off and got bigger holes now in the network. Who's going to pay it, Kenny? It's for free, Kenny's got all the stuff in the yard.
Kenny already has all the shingles set up there, just to have it on.
Huh?
It's already powered and shingles.
He's, he's got the deck.
I know, but who's going to pay him to put the shingles on?
That's what she said, it's free, it's free.
Well, don't, don't, don't matter to me.
Okay, I just. Yeah, it's free gratis. Knocked out. Budget? Budget?
Uh, budget's done, looks in paper today. Taxes are up a little bit. I tried to get them exactly the same as last year's. But it was like eight, sixteen point two fifty-four and I got sixteen point two fifty-six. So it's probably like fifty cents, it's a little, not much. They're in. The bills that we have to pay for next month, that's counting the swing set thing. It's eighteen thousand nine hundred and two dollars ninety-nine cents.
Yeah, but the swing set thing, we have, we already have grant money.
Yeah, we've got the money, but it's still going to come out of, I mean, you, you've got to include that.
The three thousand dollars that we're taking out, that we donated as our part of the swing set?
Right.
Yes.
But it's in the total of our account. I mean, it's not out of that, that twenty-two thousand something we have is, has, has the, what did we say, twelve thousand dollars in it.
It's not what?
Your total amount. Not the big one, okay. This balance of the bank, twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Okay, that includes the five thousand eight hundred dollars, the two thousand dollars from the.
It includes the grant money?
Yes. That includes the grant money, the eight hundred dollars, the four thousand dollars that we're putting in with. Is that right?
No, how much is the total bill of the swing, including the shipping? Like twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, yeah. Plus the fourteen thousand dollars?
Twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-four.
That includes shipping?
Yes, that's everything.
So we owe like twenty-nine hundred dollars, about three thousand dollars is our share. Because you said there was fifty-eight hundred dollars plus.
There's five thousand eight hundred, that's the grant. There's the two thousand the community club gave us, there's the two thousand from our box.
That's ninety-eight hundred dollars.
That's ninety-eight hundred, and then whatever else the city puts in.
The Carolyn Satan, that's all in this.
That's all in that twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Everything in that. Like.
Why would you do that? I didn't know.
That's.
Did we know that?
You need to keep it.
I think I told you that the other day.
No, is it, has it been in the meeting, like, have you put it in here as income before, in any of the minutes?
Yeah, it's, it's in, in, it's income.
It ha- it was at one time, you entered it?
Yeah. The June one, the camp grant, two thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Car grant, five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Of June? I don't know, I'm not seeing that in my mind, but. Making it look. June report. Well, there it is. Yeah, and we also bought a mower too, that's why. Yeah, all right.
But you're also going to have.
Income coming in?
Yeah, another nine thousand dollars coming in.
Okay.
And you have another water filled, another.
Well, of course, the water lines, one of them will have to pay this.
That's another three thousand.
Is anybody else behind that has made an agreement to accompany payments that we don't know about?
Uh, Pat Hatt.
And what's her agreement?
She's paying her current bill plus whatever else she can pay on her, like, the less we should have to water.
Aren't they supposed to come before the council and ask for approval?
I believe so.
I've got Katie, that's on my watch.
Why do we give them permission if the council's not giving them permission? Why is this happening?
I get good, get her in to pay anything.
Then shut her off. You know, while we got to go from one, go to the other, you know, I understand, but we have to be consistent. If they're not going to, they got to come and ask permission some kind of way.
We have, then if other people find out that they're not having to present their things to the city and other people do, then we got that where people are getting treated.
They'll just come up and talk to you and think it's okay, and that can't happen. Why do you have a council?
Shane pay his, bro. Ooh, Shane.
Do what?
Shane pay his.
I gave her the bill, I gave Sarah the bill, the deal with Shane is Tina came and looked at the bill and as far as I know, they couldn't figure it out. So the best result was to give him, because he got a letter saying he owed what, two hundred and thirty-three dollars on his door. We, yeah.
And we knocked off all except for.
Well.
You free the bill.
Yeah, and everything was knocked off except for June's bill, again, the June bills start over. That's the best, even with Tina's recollection of looking at things, that's the best of that. So Shane is good, he owes for June's bill, which would be, now he owes for July's or whatever. Whatever I gave him, whatever he gave me, I gave, I gave it to him. And gave it to Sarah, so all they have is the one bill of whatever it is, seventy, eighty, sixty bucks.
All this for July.
Yes.
Well, that one was for June.
That's the only bill he has then.
Well, he's got July to come out.
Well, he did, yeah, that just came out. He has till the twenty-first to pay the one for June, and that's all I'm talking about. He ain't behind on anything. So he, you know, yeah.
Okay, I will, I will get Pat to go out here.
Well, you know, that's the whole point is some of these people, we've tried to get them to come to the council and then you go in and give them permission, which you can't do.
We need agreement to be signed at the council.
Can't get a whole Pat reach person.
Draw up some kind of agreement and then, and they can sign it and then they'll have it paid.
We have agreements.
Huh? Then why are we not using them?
Like I said, I was just trying to get money.
Well, you need to do it properly because it could be held liable.
Remember when Nation went around and shut everybody off? Money just came out of the woodwork. That's how you get money out of the.
So, you know, the, the, as far as I know, that, you know, they are supposed to come before the city council and that's what you need to tell them. Sorry. They can't keep changing the rules because of water. Yep, they don't pay it on time, they don't ask for prior, it shuts them. You, your turn.
You're at the end.
Your turn. Your turn.
Water tower cleaning went well, fill of the tower did not. August third was my first full alarm shut off on the tapas. From the seventeenth of July to August third, I could not get the tower full because of water usage in town and the low volume pumps.
So we really don't have enough water for it?
All of the complaints about low pressure and everything, they never fell below twenty-two pounds, but twenty-two pounds is not a lot of water coming out of anybody's. So it's, it's understandable, some people are gonna have low pressure.
Is it, is it full now?
Yes, well, it's back to operating well, you know, off and on, keeping on and off. There wasn't as much nasty in the power as I expected. So I didn't know where all the nasty in the water was coming from. I took some samples, I talked to some people from Kansas River Water, I showed them samples, and the unanimous decision, that's iron and manganese that's built up in your lines. So through the fluorination process, it attacks that, and our well, uh, which one? The water up there has, has some iron in it, has some manganese, and that also contributes to it, but over the course of fifty-some years, Jack was telling me, the original water lines came in fifty years ago or better, whatever, than iron lines, they're gonna have a lot of built up in them. And it's gonna take a long time to get that out.
How long have them lined, uh, what's their, like, life expectancy of the line?
Well, um, once they get coated on the inside with stuff, they can last a long time. I mean, until they, it's the forces of freeze thaw, freeze thaw, that, that end up breaking them. I don't know what it was, they went in and put new plastic lines in, not everything. But that's something I was gonna, here in the future, try to maybe secure a grant, or see if there's any money out there to get our old iron lines, they're fifty years old replaced. I don't know if there is or not, I know we can't afford to do it, it's, it's an expensive thing.
But there's always some kinda grants up there for-
Right, and even a fifty-fifty grant where we match is still probably gonna be out of our-
Right, that may be a couple, three grants, you know, now.
Right, well, I'm gonna look into that. I'm just gonna have to continue flushing there by Linda's house as needed. Where's that at? Right across from my driveway.
Oh, okay. I got a question, somebody, you know, we use that new Aqua stuff instead of chlorine in our water, somebody says they still get chlorine and smell in the water.
Because, yeah, it's-
It's just gonna be in the line?
It's a different kinda chlorine.
Oh, all right.
It's, it's, uh, a chlorate.
But it's not, okay.
It's in a different form.
They only get it like every Sunday, I don't like-
Well, what it is, when, when the level gets real low in the line, they get that smell.
Oh, all right.
It's being used up, and, and that's part of the problem, I'm using a lot of sanitizer up at the wellhouse, so that can have legal residual limits throughout the system. The difference in, in putting in point two up there and, or two, two point oh up there and getting point four down here, there's a major demand in the system. The iron lines use, use up that chlorine. And anything else that's in there that needs to be sterilized, that's what the chlorine demand pulls that out. So I have to put in high enough amount up at the wellhouse, so that we're in compliance at every single outlet.
So for your clean lines, that would eliminate all?
You could lower, probably lower the-
It wouldn't have to fight to clean it some other way?
Right, and you don't have to adjust the chlorine level all the time, because if you get a couple real low readings-
Keep?
You know, the water's sitting in the water tower for a week or two, and if the temperature gets up, that dissipates the, the strange stuff. And on the weekends, a lot of people are using more water, so, so water that's been sitting in a line, and, and that stuff degrading in there, is getting moved and built, or being used up, or moved around, and that's why, maybe, why somebody's getting that smell. I'm doing everything I know how at this point, I'm trying to learn more and more, I keep it circulated and-
I didn't, I didn't realize the part about that new stuff had chlorine or whatever, something like that, I don't know why, because we're not using chlorine, just go-
There's, there's a new, or not a new, we could get a new chemical we could add up at the wellhouse, and I don't know the cost, but it attaches to that iron and all that stuff. Doesn't give away from it, it just keeps it from turning red, and it's, I mean, still in there, plus another chemical in our water, but you wouldn't have the red or black. But we would have the cost, and you're, like I said, you're still having another chemical in there.
They could just give, yeah.
Filters and new lines and flushing of the lines are the only solution that, that I know of. Lundy blading roads, I got the rater back up going.
Are you on, are you, where you been working on ditches?
I have not been digging any ditches. I also been worried about how many hours I'm gonna put in, because one week was like forty-eight hours when we drained the tower. I know how tight things are, and I'm not just gonna be out showing dirt and ditch.
Oh, no, I'm not asking you, I'm really not.
Well, but I know there's a lot of stuff that doesn't look like anything getting done, but I'm-
No, I'm, I'm asking, are I blaming the roads too wide? I'm asking, I don't know.
Because they're all, they're all bulging.
Yeah, but they're not gonna get, but the ditches are not, it's just my opinion, I don't know anything, but you dig the ditches first, and the water flows down the ditches, it stays off the roof, I know you have to peak the road.
Right, well, there's humps on the side, there is, there is some, there's some ditches.
Sure.
And if that, the hump on the side, like down Christie and Railroad, I bladed all.
I see.
Tried to cut that, and got tremendous amount of grass, crap, but there's a lot of good gravel there too, we had. So I worked it across a few times, trying to get the gravel out of the grass, I've left the grass set for a month now. So I can blade that again and get more of the goodie back onto the road, and rest crap. And like I said, that's one of the plans I'm starting to blade more.
I, I just, I don't know, so I gotta ask.
I'd say you end up with a bunch of crap and you got nothing to do with, like a driveway. With that lake I have in my backyard. But it can't be used somewhere else from the city, but it's-
emergencies, the emergencies happen like the tarp, I don't know what the difference was. How many hours are you working?
Twenty a week, it varies.
Well, I mean, no more than like thirty-six or forty in the summer? Are you working more than that?
Nobody's ever, Gina was at thirty-two, is all I-
Okay, well, that's good, I mean, I don't, because in the summer, we have all these, everybody has all these demands they want you to do, but you can't get it done in twenty hours, so, but in the winter time, different, it's not.
Well, if, yeah. All right, I will, uh, not worry about it then. Also, another thing, we need to, the council needs to think about a water meter replacement program. Since I've lived and barely ever been on the council, or mayor, or anything, I've never heard or seen anything, discussion about replacing any water meters.
We do have a lifespan.
Aren't they, when we-
Two thousand three, would have some of them replaced.
When we were, when we did the water?
But that was just on the lines that they, uh, redid the water lines, and we did probably a third of the town.
Line was moved.
Well, if that moved, then put a new meter in there.
Oh, okay, I don't know, I don't-
The information that I've dug up, ten years, you should replace a water meter, because they lose their accuracy, and, you know.
How much are they for a water?
I'm not sure, I'm thinking between two to three hundred dollars.
There is, um, uh, the Geo Hewitt Grant, did you see that come, for us a fifty thousand dollars for community improvement? I mean, yeah, we just have to apply support, and I think, you know, I don't know, but I would like to think that we have a thought of getting something, because we are making an attempt at helping ourselves with the community white cleanup, you know, we're, um-
Or something key also.
We did something else, because we did the park, we also contributed some there, we're trying to make some improvements, and maybe that, you know, maybe that-
Even if we can't secure a grant, um, my recommendation is that we figure out a plan.
Maybe there's-
If we have a hundred, if we have a hundred meters in, in the system, um, we do ten a year.
Oh, sure.
So it rotates, you know, set up some kind of a-
So every time you need one, you can just replace it, and then, I mean-
Start with the oldest one.
Sure, sure.
Now, can them, all the ones be re-purished?
I don't know, they can be, I'm, I'm sure they can be rebuilt, but I don't know if it's cost effective. I, I, I don't know, I could, I'd have to look into that, but and even, even if you wanted to do five a year.
That's something to look at.
You know, it's, it's, it's a start, it's something to, to get the ball rolling, and then by the end of the, you know, you're still, at twenty years, you know, every twenty years, you, all your meters are new. That's not recommended, but it's probably better than what we got right now.
Well, and eventually you'll start over, you know, the ones, the first one is just, but at least we have, are up to date all the time, we're trying to keep-
Find out who's getting all this in here in town.
Well, I would, it, it's not necessarily all, oh, this one's ten years old. It's, it's a combination of ten years old plus a million and a half gallons for two hundred thousand gallons, you know, you have to look at the gallons.
How much, how much are they, do you know?
I, I don't have an exact figure, but I'm thinking anywhere from two to four hundred.
Oh, all right, so not too bad.
Yeah, 'cause all the, all the meters off the red dash line should be the ones that are replaced in oh-three.
Yeah, the dark, the dark one, the old ones.
Still, that's thirteen years to go.
Right, right, okay, yeah, find out how much they cost, or whatever, find them.
But that was one thing I wanted to talk to you guys about, um, I'm gonna need some more, another barrel of chemicals to-
Do you need another barrels?
Huh?
Do you need another barrels?
Is there any other things that are pressing that the council wants to see me?
No, as long as you make yourself nothing around town.
I think we need to get that down here, across from the bank, where Jack's talking about the dirty road and over, get that finished, dig now.
I thought Richard's down there with a shovel every day.
Yeah, he, 'cause he asked me before we-
I started working on that.
He'd asked me if he could do that, work on that, clean that, I'm like, knock yourself out, dude, take it, whatever.
I started working on that with tobacco, and he told me he had a skid loader and a truck, and he was taking care of it, so I stopped working.
Well, then I-
Gotta, gotta hold him up to it or something, 'cause like Jack said, he calls, Jack will zoom.
Just do it.
He was down there tonight, filling the truck.
Really?
Yeah, oh, okay.
I guess we'll, if he, we'll give him so long, and if he doesn't do it, then just go in and do it, I don't know. We gotta scoop it up, company, he's piling in there.
How much would that ridge fencing or something like that cost to build around that whole thing?
About a dollar a foot.
Huh?
About a dollar a foot.
Um, if we, you know, if he doesn't take care of that, how many letters have you sent him? At least a couple, three.
Been four years, worked on it, three, four years.
Since that's calling in?
Yeah.
Okay, then can we not send him a letter saying that he has so many days to comply, and if not, we will do it ourselves, take care of ourselves, and it will be built to him? Built to him, or attached to his taxes?
Yeah.
It's a safety issue, and we're gonna get sued.
Problem is, we attach it to taxes to that property, that's probably about ten dollars a, you know?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm sure that's what the barrel chemicals for, but Kathy brought me outside, she asked me to bring up the back of the weeds growing in asphalt.
Yeah, she has brought that up, about in the cracks in the road, in the middle of the road.
And the dips in the road.
And I said, if people drive on it, you burn it down, but she says it's breaking up the asphalt, and I keep going, it's asphalt, it's little than all we are, so it's probably already breaking up before the weeds are thrown, but-
It just crinkles coming out.
Crinkles, I, yeah, um, but these right here, have you sprayed them?
In front of Richard's leaves?
Yeah.
On purpose?
In front of Richard's?
Oh, all right.
No, we left Richard's.
I think if he would try fixing it, say, let's see, you know, make-
No, I, yeah, he don't try anything, you're right, okay, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I-
Yeah.
What I did was I wrote him a letter, and the letter I stated that he needed to come up here and get the weeds and stuff cleaned up around his buildings, and clean up the trash lifts around his building. If he does not do it, we will do it for him and charge him twenty-five dollars an hour.
Well, and here's the deal-
I voted between the buildings, and I waited and cleaned up this street towards Churchill on the side of that building, so the sidewalk, it was to be accessible, but I didn't do it in front.
That's in between those two buildings, here, you know, Richard.
I don't know.
Yes, yes, he traded park in there last summer? No, he owns the first building, and whoever owns the other two buildings also owns the lot.
Richard also.
No.
Rather he get the deal, build it rather.
Not according to the register needs, or the-
Kenny didn't have the money, hey, he gave it back to Richard.
No, I know that part, but I'm talking about the other ones, it's, uh, Bogart.
His actual name.
They're not, you go up there and talk to Ron, that's the prison office.
Also, I'm gonna go to Lowe's this week to get materials to fix the beams on the building, this building here. Hopefully this week. I haven't ordered any of that cold mix.
Well, wait till Labor Day.
How special?
He, he can get ten percent and twenty percent, he can get thirty percent off.
And, Labor Day weekend?
Labor Day.
All right then.
So all get, get over him, and, yeah, jump in there, you call him or something.
How much is all the pellet?
I didn't ask you that much.
I was gonna tell you, James, if you're gonna go spend money, you need to let me know so I can put money on the list.
Budget meeting, what's the budget meeting here?
That all you got, water towers?
Oh, sure.
That's, that's basically all I have.
That's all you got, maintenance, I mean? Okay, budget meeting August twentieth, seven o'clock here.
You need to decide on your next meeting.
Huh?
I said you need to decide on your September meeting, the third is Labor Day. We can have it the Tuesday after Labor Day, or we can have it the next fall, Monday on the tenth.
Probably that on the tenth, Teddy can't be here on the fourth, so.
That sounds good.
Huh?
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Anything else?
Uh, Chris Barron asked me if, uh, you guys are still wanting him to haul the sand back, or whatever. He told you he'd haul it back if you guys bought it.
Hold it here?
Yeah, from Lincoln to here, as long as he's got a truck coming back in.
Right. We've got that, I believe we've got that for him.
And where it would be put.
Hey, oh, I got a question also, um-
This lot has, Steve Ryan got the papers on this lot over here for the-
One on this side of our building, he buy that?
Yes.
Why?
I don't know.
And what's he planning to do with that?
He doesn't know.
For Bert's Crosses old place?
No, no, right here, on this side of our city building, he bought that lot, and I would, 'cause what I was gonna do is suggest that we either buy that lot, or have the guy just turn it over to the city, whatever, he doesn't, he doesn't mow it, he doesn't anything, so now what's his agenda with it?
I, I have no idea, that's why I asked him, that yes, he has bought it, it was in the paper.
I haven't seen it in the paper.
Somebody saw in the paper that they were asking, Jack might be, 'cause he was asking me the lot numbers.
Well, then I'm gonna ask how much you pay for it, 'cause I, I just, I'm gonna wanna know, 'cause I imagine he's gonna wanna sell it, but why, we need to-
So we need to make sure we get all our stuff off there that we want.
Yeah, all that, well, we only got a pile of gravel or- Yeah, all that, our, well, we only got a pile of gravel or a pile of dirt under it.
He, he said he didn't care that our stuff was on there. I, but he's gonna do it.
Yeah.
He doesn't know what he's gonna do with it. What's he gonna do with the other one?
Well, I mean, he's gonna tear the other building down, but the bank was gonna buy that buil, that building, they've been trying for years supposedly to buy that building, tear it down, then they were gonna build them a building over there. I don't know what's going on, okay, I just wonder.
I just know when they come to the stadium tearing that building down, if that will, well, the tinder is not covered, it has to be filled.
In that building on that end?
Yeah.
And that...
That's on him, that's on him.
See, that'll have to be inspected for our assistance, too, before it can do anything.
He tore it all out already, he's already gutted it. Yeah, him and the boy, and, uh, I think the daughter, Laura was down there, but they already did it one day I was coming by, and she talked about them already picking it up. Somebody looked inside, said, we...
You wanna see him cause of it?
This land on this land, yeah, 'cause, yeah, ask him who wants to sell it, and then we'll find out who to pay for it first.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause that, you know, we might, we should have had first choice of it if they wanted to sell it.
Well, it probably just, he probably got ahold of whoever owned it, I can't even remember the guy's name, he didn't own here.
But does it, is it all the way back to the alley?
Yeah, just to the alley.
At the pole lot?
Just to the alley, yeah, that, just that, this side of the building back. I don't know, twenty-five feet or something.
Okay. Is that it? Make the most, anybody else got anything?
I make the most of that journey.
Second.
All clear? She say has something?
Who?
Maggie.
Oh.
Maggie started to say something.
I can bring it up next to me.
Okay.